You are watching Access the Port County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 16th meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaportcounty.org.
Good afternoon, everyone. And thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. First on the agenda will be roll call.
Okay, here we go. Jacqueline Jones.
Present.
Linda Kindley. Lori Wink, present. Charlotte Saye. Angela Carter.
Present.
Keisha Ward.
Here.
Kiana Edwards.
Here.
Sarah Jones.
Here.
Nyla Williams.
Present.
We're going to do something a little bit different, if that's okay with everyone. We have next on the agenda, a presentation of a request, and it's from Denise Ship from the MBA of Northwest Indiana. And after she does hers, we will have questions and answers, and then we'll have an insight regarding the LWV League of Women Voters from Lori Wink. And then it'll be following questions and answers, and then we'll take care of the business afterwards, okay? So Denise Ship is present, and Denise, will you please give us a presentation of the requests?
Hi, I'm Denise Ship Quinn. I am the CEO and founder of the MBA of Northwest Indiana. We're here today because we're doing a two-day Juneteenth celebration. It's combined with the whole community. We're going to have community resource people there. We're going to have the Kidpreneur, it's going to be set up on Wednesday. We're going to have a presentation, we're going to honor Mr. Charles Westcott, and that's going to be at the Westcott Park that Sunday, June 16th. We're going to have, it starts with a men-women cook-off. So that's from 8:00 to 11:30. Then there's going to be church service from 12:00 to 2:00. That's a combined community church service. And then from 4:00 to 9:00, we're just going to sit back and drink some libations and eat some food and listen to some jazz and R&B. We have a concert. So it's just going to be a fun two days to celebrate Juneteenth. And we would like you to be a sponsor. Any questions?
I have one Denise. Did you say Kidpreneur?
The Kidpreneurs will be set up on Wednesday, and we're going to have a contest. It's going to be a video game competition. So we're going to have two contests. One is the Grill Off, that's on Sunday, and then for the kids, we're going to do a competition where they actually can win games.
So put this on Wednesday for the kids?
Juneteenth.
That is actually June?
Juneteenth.
But then it goes through the weekend?
No, it starts on Sunday.
Okay.
The 16th, and on the 19th, we're going to finish it up.
I got you, I was getting embarrassed.
That's okay, I said it backwards. We're going to have stilt walkers, we're going to have sack races, just old-fashioned checkers. We're going to have games for the kids down there, but we wanted to give them something that they like, and I know they like video games. So we're going to have a free contest, they can win something, a trophy and some free games.
It's all in Washington Park then, right?
No, ma'am.
Oh, it's not?
Charlie Westcott Park.
It's all going to be at the...
There's two locations, the amphitheater is Sunday.
Gotcha.
And Wednesday is going to be at Charles Westcott Park. And we're going to have people to get up and talk about Mr. Westcott.
Okay. Are you this year having vendors or community resources with the tables?
Just the Kidpreneurs and maybe the community resource people, because the city wants...
On which day?
On Wednesday.
For the community resource?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we will be welcome to set up a table?
You're welcome to set up.
Okay, is there a fee or a cost for setting up a table?
If it's sponsored, no, we'll charge. We'll have a table to choose there, that's what you need. If you need more, let me know.
And what's the fee for the sponsorship?
There's different levels, and it's all in a letter. It starts at $2.50 and goes all the way to $5,000.
Do you happen to have that letter with you? I know you have, I thought I printed it off, but I don't...
I emailed it to you, I don't.
I have it. I thought I printed it off, though. I can...
I can email it to you again.
I can pull it up.
And we have it in this packet, I've been at the park performing all day. Let's see, what's in this round? I don't think the sponsorship is here, this is all the contract with the city.
And what's the deadline for the sponsorships, Denise?
Oh, we're going to let you in. We had a cutoff of, I think, the level, but because a lot of people aren't getting the information in time and manner, it's just we're going to extend it. People are still submitting their sponsorship letter today. So we will let you guys in, if you want to be a part of it. We just need to know in time, you know what, there is a deadline, because we're going to put your name on the shirts, we're also going to have any written response, so I need to know before June the 1st.
Well, that's the meeting today, so that would be timely.
Thank you.
I have it pulled up, I can verbally show it.
Can you tell us the levels?
Sure. You have Diamond, and that's sponsorship requesting a $5,000. Platinum, $3,000. Gold, $2,000. Silver, $1,000. Bronze, $500. And a starter is $250.
Last year, you guys were very generous, the $1,000, we appreciate it, and if you can do that again, or more, appreciate that too.
Any questions? Does anyone have any questions?
Are you looking for a motion?
We're going to, yeah, we're going to discuss everything after.
Any more questions?
This is not the time then, okay?
Any more questions, I may before I go?
Thank you.
That's why I was asking. I just wanted to know, would the kids be, would they be gaming against each other, playing their games, or?
We're going to have two big TVs out there with the game systems, and they're going to be competing against each other.
Okay, that's...
I think it's, yeah, that's two out of three to move to the next level. I'm learning about it, too. Yeah, I just thought it'd be something fun to do.
Right, right, it will.
Can you just say the time one more? For both days, like what time does it start, what time does it end? So Sunday?
Sunday, the Grill Off is going to be, and that starts at 8:00. The judging is at 11:30. Church starts at 12:00, 12:00 to 2:00. And the actual concert starts at 4:00.
Is that a live band, is it?
Yes, a live band. We have a live band, we have a DJ, we have a comedian, we have spoken word, so it's going to be a little mixture.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. And actually, when we do the Wednesday event, that's 11:00 to 6:00. And at 1:00, we're going to have a program. And in that program, we're going to do tribute, so there's going to be spoken word there.
Okay. Did you mention if it's food on Wednesday, or?
There's free food.
Free food on Wednesday?
On Wednesday. And on Sunday, there's going to be vendors with liquor, beer, wine, and food.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
So there's the event on Sunday, and then Wednesday, and in between, there's...
Not, yeah.
Okay.
Just like...
Juneteenth is officially that Sunday, though.
Juneteenth is officially the 19th, which is Wednesday, so we wanted to do something on Sunday.
Gotcha.
To try to capture some of the weekend, but Pride is the day before us.
Oh.
Okay, any more questions? Anyone have any other questions? Well, thank you so much, Denise, for sharing the information with us, and we will follow up with you.
I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next on the agenda is Laura, or Lori, I'm sorry, Lori. Lori, and Lori is going to give us insight regarding the League of Women Voters regarding Women's Equality Day.
Do we need to go approval of the minutes?
We're going to do that afterwards.
Oh, I didn't pronounce the minute, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. We're going to do, I have an extra, do you want another agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you need? No, you're good. Okay. Did every, I hope I gave everybody the updated agenda, did I give?
Oh, we won't, do you want to finish?
We're going to pass the business part of it after Lori, yeah. We'll do both then.
Okay.
All right, so Lori's going to present now?
Yes, I'm going to give you some information that was sent to Bonnie Schaff, in an email to Jackie, and then I was copying on it. It gives a lot of information about the history of what the commission has done for Women's Equality Day, and also some of the connections that it's had with the League of Women Voters. So Bonnie was on the commission, our commission, from 2015 to 2023, and during that time, around the Women's Equality Day, they would have free lunches, usually at LeBastian Center for the Arts, and guest speakers, and food. She said they usually got 50 to 60 people, but in 2022, there was a fundraising event instead of the free lunch. And then last year, I know we did just a proclamation through the city council, but there wasn't really any event around that. So in '22 and '23, Christina Isabel, who was the former president of our commission, and Bonnie, had Zoom calls with the ACLU Indiana staff, including reproductive rights advocate Caitlin Teague. And the League of Women Voters was interested in inviting Caitlin to speak. She, so they never connected because of whatever schedules, but then last November, the commission, before most of y'all were on, I came on last June, we discussed the possibility of the commission jointly having a Women's Equality Day with the League of Women Voters and inviting Caitlin to speak on the status of reproductive rights in Indiana. The League does not have funds available to pay for the event, but she said we're good at promoting, they have a mailing list of 300, and I'm sure International Women's Day also went out to those members. So she says, please let us know if you want to pursue this. I know that there have been some back and forths with Jackie and some of the League members and with myself, since I am the League of Women Voters representative on this commission. So that's some background. Any questions about that?
When you say, yes, I have been trying to schedule a meeting, so I can also bring back some sort of information to the commissioners regarding what the request is. Honestly, you all, I did not know what they're asking, I was hearing different things, but I wanted to get some concrete information before any decision was, you know, to be made.
This email was April 27th, I forgot to mention that.
Okay, so yes, Bonnie is one that I was able, well, she emailed me, I was able to speak with her, and like Lori said, she kind of briefly stated that if we could, it was a possibility that maybe we can join in with them on this. Also with, I spoke with Linda Lancaster, and I believe Linda was the president at the time, at this current time, but they're pursuing another president.
We're having an annual meeting on Saturday, which Regina Riddell would be elected president.
So she just gave me a little insight. At that time, Linda and Bonnie both had stated that, they didn't say that they had got a speaker, but they were trying to pursue Caitlin, but they didn't have the funds to, I guess, pay for the speaker and also to have this event. So someone else reached out to me the other day, I believe, for someone else, I'm sorry, is Karen?
Karen Bernacki, she's the special events person.
Okay, so Karen reached out, and she, I had invited her today to come to see what it is that they're asking us to do, because again, like I explained to everyone, the ones that I was in communication with is that I cannot make that decision. I have a responsibility of bringing everything back to the commissioners, and you all have a voice, you know, just as well as we do, so it would be a joint discussion, and it would be a joint recommendation or a joint vote on this, how we're going to pursue it. It was some ideas regarding Michigan City Commission for Women, maybe we may want to do our own event for Women's Equality Day. One has been done, a gala, my understanding, in the past years as a fundraiser.
Yeah, that was included in the evening.
And since it was a lot of positive feedback regarding the International Women's Day luncheon, so thinking like maybe basically the unity and the fellowship and whatnot, so thinking maybe something like that can be done again, some type of a luncheon program with some speakers, also maybe giving out some awards or whatnot. Karen did ask for a meeting or whatnot, and I said that I was available, but she requested the meeting, I believe, June, after June 5th, because I believe she said you all are meeting June 5th or something, and she said she wanted to get more detail. The only concern I have is August is just right around the corner, and I just didn't want us to be stagnant. I have done some research regarding a venue for us, and if we decide that we want to pursue something on our own, starting that off, and then we can all plan with the subcommittee or whatnot, and continue to proceed. There's also maybe a recommendation of asking as soon as we find out how much funding that they're asking or requesting regarding the speaker, and if we want to help fund the speaker or whatnot. But again, this is something that I would want the entire commission to talk about, discuss, and we, you know, vote on it or whatnot.
I think we know from this email what the idea is, so we already know what the joint activity would be, they're just waiting to find out if we agree to invite this woman on Reproductive Rights, and if we're, you know, having a luncheon, just the details. They want to know if we want to partner with them, for one thing, I think that's the first question.
Partner with them on this particular day, or?
Yeah, or this event.
Okay, because I, okay.
Because that's what had been proposed last November in the commission, that was before, you know, y'all joined, but...
And I understand that, Lori, and with all respect, we still have a new commission, a group of commission, and then in all fairness, again, they have, you know, as the new group, you know, to make a recommendation or motion if we want to take a new vote, or to see how we're going to proceed. Not saying that we won't, because it's also other future events or whatnot, but again, it's something joint that I would like to hear from the commissioners, and not, you know. So, so that was one of the things that we were going to discuss in the business meeting.
Can you just explain, you say partner, so it's like the commission and League of Women Voters are putting this activity on, is that what you mean by partner?
Yes, they would be co-hosting.
Okay.
And they don't have money to put toward it, so...
Do they do fundraisers?
I do not believe they do, no.
Okay.
And as I read in the early part of this email, the commission did do free lunch programs for Women's Equality Day, not with the League, just part of the commission.
Are they requesting funds from other entities?
They're just requesting to know whether we are going to partner with them, and then what would that mean? So it is May, this is the end of August, so I'm almost thinking it's getting a little late.
And I know Karen has stated that she wanted to meet with you all, and who you all are, I don't know, but she did say that she wanted to meet on June 5th, I believe, with the committee or something, maybe.
Well, I don't think we have a committee, so...
No, no, I'm saying with, I'm just saying what Karen was saying.
Yeah, I saw her.
That she wanted, right, to meet, and she wanted to give more detail, or get more detail and more planning before she could really even tell us anything. So, I don't know, do you know anything about that, or?
I know what she's said to you.
Okay.
And you've been wanting to meet with them, so it hasn't happened, and I'm just saying...
Well, I'm available to meet.
It's May, so, you know, we've got just a couple months.
Right, it's August. August is right around the corner, I'm not saying it's August now, but August is right around the corner. But no, I'm available to meet, but I understand that things does occur, or do occur, and emergencies have taken place where they weren't able to meet, but I did share with Karen that I'm available, and even after her meeting, if she still wanted to meet. But again, I just didn't want us to be stagnant, and we can, you know, still plan on our end if that's something that we're going to decide to do.
I think we'll hear from the other commissioners, is what we feel, since we're meeting right now.
Well, you know what, since we are meeting, let's go back to the agenda, and then we'll resurface that, if that's okay with everybody, okay? So did everyone get a chance to review the approval of April minutes?
Okay. That's it. The only change would be the spelling of my name.
Okay.
It was NYLA, it's NI-LA. Oh, where do you have that? Oh, yes, I see that. And just for the record, I never said I was going to be out two meetings, but that's beside the point, so.
That's the only thing I saw.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will correct that before I send it in.
Okay.
Thanks, Nyla.
Any other corrections? Okay, can we make a motion to approve the minutes, please?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Minutes are approved. Treasurer's report, we probably will have to place that under unfinished business, or resurface that on the next meeting, because Charlene isn't available. So I, the only thing I have is the last balance, and that was from last meeting, so I don't know if there's anything else that has been adjusted, or any income coming in, or anything out, so we'll have that treasurer's report on the next meeting. New business, and this is where we are here, motion to vote for the request of donation regarding the MBA of Northwest Indiana. Also, under new business, will be implementing a procedure for donation requests, and then also we'll be discussing under new business, Women's Equality Day recommendations and discussions regarding that. For the motion to vote, I will step out, because last year, I stepped out while you all are voting, because I was involved with Juneteenth, and I started volunteering in the beginning of this year, you know, so I was able to hear, and I don't want it to be unfair or anything like that, so I'll step out when you all vote for that. But if we can, before you all take the vote, B, implement a procedure for donation request, because I know that we may have some more donations, maybe, and I was wondering, or not wondering, I think that it would be okay to have a discussion, how would we do that? You know, are we going to set some type of procedure, or some, something in place? You know?
I believe there's something in Google Docs that's already there for us. Yeah, for requests for donations, because the commission has entertained those before.
Right, but is it like, can they be repetitive, like if they come back every year for it, or?
There is, there is something in there about that, because we discussed that.
That's what I was...
I'll have to, I would have to look back.
It's there, though, right?
Because we'd actually just, not that long ago, revised all of that.
Okay, so did the commissioners, us, when I say us, we revised it, or did?
As a commission, we revised our procedure and expectations, or?
Okay, so maybe I will print that, and, well, I'm not going to say maybe, I can print it, and then I can have it at the next meeting, and then maybe that's something that we can discuss and see if we want to revise, or if we want to keep it the same. Just wanted it to be fair, you know, because it may be some other organizations, not saying that we won't vote yes this time or whatnot, but how often can someone, you know, return, you know, requesting donations, like if they want, if they're going to do it yearly, are we going to agree to that, or if it's like, maybe, just giving an example, like if it's someone requesting one year, but then they can't return and request an amount until another two years, or something like that. That's just an example, just something in place, how will we do this, if it's going to be a certain amount that we will be able to give? So just wanted you all to think about that, some type of procedures, but I will find it in Google Docs, and I will have it printed out.
Okay, can you just email it to us, so then we can review that?
Sure.
To the next meeting?
Sure.
And then we can discuss it, as obviously printed, but we'll at least have time to look it over, and then bring any questions, you know, to the meeting. In the past, we dealt with things as they came up, that people would come to the meeting, right, Sarah, and make a request, and so...
No, they would fill out the form ahead of time.
Right, but then, you know, in terms of the particulars, like tonight, Denise came and said, here are the levels, so then we made a decision on what we were going to do. So Denise did not fill out the form yet, did mine? No.
Okay.
But she would.
Sure, yeah, I was just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah.
No, I'm sure she didn't know, but it is either your...
And that's why I was saying it's kind of important if we, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Daisy.
Would that, is that form for donations and sponsorships? Because tonight, it seems like that would be a sponsorship instead of just a donation, so then there would be advertisement, so it would be for both, or?
No, the donation request form is a donation request form, and the sponsorship, we didn't have anything.
The I'm order. See, and that's what I'm saying, things like that need to be implemented, you know what I'm saying? Right. So that's what I'm saying, I'm sorry, things like that should, you know, should be implemented, some type of procedure, if it's a sponsorship, and thank you, Daisy, for that, if it's a donation request, you know, if there's certain different type of forms, just, you know, wanted to kind of revisit and put something in.
Well, I know that Genesis donations, so I think that was what we were responding to, request for donation.
Okay, so if you all are ready to vote on this one, this particular item, before we discuss moving on to the League of Women Voters, I can step out. Are you all ready to make a vote or a motion? I can step out.
We're not voting on an amount, we're just voting that we will or won't.
Well, you, we probably would need to vote on an amount as well, because we would need to let her know.
Okay.
Okay? So are you all ready to make the vote, so I can step out, or?
We have to go.
Well, I can't vote.
No, I don't know if you could say. You just have to step out.
You sure?
Yeah. I move that we, again, sponsor the Juneteenth event at the level of $1,000, which I guess we did last year, and I didn't know that, so whatever, gold or silver, whatever that is. I think it's, you know, we represented last year, it's important that we support this event, I think, and it's part of our mission.
Okay.
So...
Anybody got anything else to say?
I guess it's dying for lack of support.
No, it's not, I don't think it's about support. I think we should support, support it. I don't agree with the $1,000 stuff, but I would say 500. I'm kind of going with that, just because right now, we have no plans to add to our funds at the moment? Yeah, so then we need to start working on what we're doing as fundraisers, so just to start giving out money. I agree wholeheartedly, we should support it, and, you know, try to be a part of it. I'm sure I will be there and everything, but $1,000.
And I would say no.
We've discussed in the past, and I say we, just the commission at that given time, keeping our amount that we have available, not going below a certain amount. Do you remember what that was? Was it 10,000?
I know.
So that, it was the gala, in order to put on another fundraiser type thing, we wanted to keep that amount of money available, so that when we want to do another fundraiser, we have... Um available so that when we want to do another fundraiser, we have those funds available. Um and I don't remember what that amount is, and I don't know. What we are currently financially with the other expenses, if they have been taken out. Um cause in that, that's the general.
As of, as of um the last meeting, we were at fifteen thousand, one oh three.
And there was some money that still needed to be taken out, and I don't remember that amount.
I think those are the expenses for the International Women's, and they were paid. Those were covered. So um, those were approved at last meeting, so.
They were paid.
Yeah, cause that was in um April's treasurer's report, the fifteen thousand.
Yeah, you're right, it's fourteen.
But if you scroll down on that agenda a little bit, and it says there's still, I don't know if there, there's another section in there that mentioned, I just kind of. Funds that.
Yeah.
Needed to be dispersed still, and I don't.
Right, five, two hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-one cents, so.
That was dispersed. Okay.
We haven't talked about that.
Christina, yes, we approved it, but I don't know if she received it, but we did approve.
So we would have the, what our rough amount was and what we agreed as a commission to keep our financial balance. I thought, I wanna say it was ten thousand, but I don't know.
It wasn't on the commission then, but we'll have to check.
Yeah, so if you.
We can decide again.
Yeah, honestly, that's a decision that we'll, we'll have to, a new decision that we'll have to make among.
And that was just so that we could have that cushion when we're ready to do another big fundraising event, we had that money available. To be able to raise more funds and we're not just continuing to run the balance down.
Yeah.
Can we decide on other amounts that are not slated, like she gave them to us five and three? Cause what if we wanted to give seven hundred or twelve hundred, or, I mean, can we give what we want to give?
Absolutely.
I believe so.
Yeah, good.
So what do you think?
You thinking a different number?
I was just thinking a different number.
What were you thinking?
I was thinking more like seven hundred. Just a little bit of that six fifty.
I I agree with seven hundred, because also um we have to also consider that other organizations may. Uh ask, ask, you know, for for funds from us as well, so. Um and like I said, we wanna keep our, our funds in a certain amount, so if we give to one and, you know, someone else come asking, we're not able to. You know, I mean, so I think we need to also consider that as well, because as if, um with the League of Women Voters, want us to support them as well, so. We already have two on the table that were, that are asking for support.
And then, I don't know if I can add on to this, um and also keep in mind too, I'm pretty certain that they would, they have asked sponsors, for sponsors, other sponsors as well. So they're probably receiving more fu- funding, you know what I'm saying, some other additional funding, and they're not just looking, you know, of course, at us. So um I I agree with you, Kiana, and I agree with you as well that we want to keep a nice cushion. Because even if we want to um present, or or if we want to host some things ourself, you know, we have that. And we don't wanna just drain everything we have, if anything, we wanna add unto it. Um one, I'm a believer of even supporting the youth, you know, even events for the youth or whatnot, um so.
And I withdraw my original motion for a thousand, so. We're obviously gonna go a little bit.
Yeah, I I think I agree with seven hundred, cause like I said, we're not even sure. How much the League of Women Voters is even asking for, you know, and, you know, Denise was clear as to what she was requesting. And so we're, we don't even know what the League of Women Voters even asking for, so I I agree with seven hundred.
So is that a motion?
I can't make the motion.
Okay. You said six fifty, right? Yeah, I was just, I'm trying to work in between those, um I agree with Jackie in the most part, it's our first time that we were actually making a. A motion on, um and since we don't know what's going with League, I wish we can vote on that as well.
Oh, we will, I mean.
So can we just divide it in half, you know, like, yeah, five and five?
Well, we'll, we'll talk, discuss the Women's, um I mean, the. League of Women Voters after this, so this, this is separate, you have to do one, huh?
No, I'm saying she's talking about part, we, we don't have to, we have to start discussing that yet.
Right, we haven't discussed that part yet.
But I heard when she said a thousand, I just think that's extreme, too.
Oh, you're talking about with.
Why not five, I mean, I'm. Yes. I think five is good.
Well, someone will have to make that emo- the motion, what are you thinking?
I I agree with seven.
Okay, I agree with seven hundred, I I will make the motion to give seven hundred.
Can you just explain why, you said seven?
Yeah, why seven?
Why seven? Because I was thinking about all that she mentioned. All the, the, all of the expenses that she will incur. And what if she doesn't have, what if she's asking other groups that don't have what we have, and I'm maybe being too empathetic, but. I was thinking five may be too little, I just wanted to help her a little bit more than that, just because of so many things. Even just the food alone, because the expenses of food is going up so much. And then the DJ, I mean, just one of those things alone is our portion of giving.
I'm figuring since she's organized it, and I'm sure she has a committee. They have a budget, and they kind of know what different groups can live, so.
Right.
I think, you know, like we did for Women's Equality Day, we kept it to a certain amount, so. I mean, I I'm not probably as concerned as you are. She showed out the um. Lack of sponsors, I think she's probably got. Pretty good sponsorship, but. Hard to know, we didn't get to ask for that, did we?
No. Okay, what made the motion?
I, like I said, I, I like to, I'll stick with the seven hundred, because I know how much just the insurance alone costs at each facility. And I have definitely researched that, and it is costly, just insurance alone, to even say that you're having the event there, so, seven hundred.
So that's the motion.
Yeah.
I'll second.
I'll stay there, I'm.
She's second.
Seven hundred, take it for Juneteenth.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There it is.
So, we all, well, you all have voted seven hundred dollars um as a donation, gonna ask as well.
Sponsorship.
I mean sponsorship, thank you. Um, gonna ask as well if we will consider to uh set up a table, and if no one can, well, I'm volunteering, I can um. Sit at the table or whatnot, um that we have literature, or um just whatever else information regarding our um commission.
We developed that brochure in time for Juneteenth last year, for the, we have a brochure for the commission, and we threw that together so that we could have that at the table.
So it is a brochure place then, so just have to, we just, is it enough copies?
And then update it if you need me to.
Okay.
Print so many copies.
So it's um, she's got it right here, so if there's something you want me to add to, or change out, or.
Okay, I'll do it, I think, was this one at the um.
Women's.
International, okay, that was nice. Okay, so we just need to get more of those, okay. Would anyone else like to join me at the booth, or?
What day is that?
Um, I believe she said Wednesday, right, she's gonna have the.
Yeah.
Wednesday, June nineteenth. June nineteenth. I believe that's on a Wednesday, is that Tuesday?
It's a Wednesday.
Okay. So do we need to agree or vote, if we're gonna have a table, or?
I think we should. Um, I think we should have a table.
Okay, so should I make a motion that we have a table then? I make a motion that we have a table for Juneteenth.
All just sleepy.
On the day of Juneteenth at Westcott Park. Anyone want a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll have a table set up um for Juneteenth on Wednesday. All right. And seven hundred dollars for the sponsorship. Okay, and I will ask Denise if she can complete, well, we have to have the form.
Well, that's the point, the sponsorship, we don't have.
She has a form, but, okay. All right, so she.
Denise probably has.
She has a form.
We need to fill that out.
I would need to get, yeah.
We just, Char would make the donation.
Okay.
Sponsorship, or treasurer.
Okay. Thank you. We're gonna table the implementing, the procedure for the donation request, I believe that's what we all agreed upon. I find it in Google Docs and email it to you all, and you all review it, then we come back at the next meeting. And if you all have some sort of input on it, you know, some ideas or whatnot, what we wanna implement. Um for the donation or sponsorship um procedure, okay? So I know we need something in place, whether we're gonna update, make some changes, you know, revisions or whatnot, we need something in place.
I think um if it's not in the drive, I'm pretty sure it is on our um commission page, basically. That's where.
Okay.
The public would find it.
Okay, thank you. All right, so. Um, let's discuss the Women's Equality Day recommendations and discussion under seat. Um, we heard um what Lori was, Lori was saying, and thank you Lori for providing the information. I guess there's two ways to look at this, yes, they asked, um but they didn't say. They did ask, my understanding, that's what I'm receiving, is like maybe a partnership. But I'm not certain if it's just a partnership for this particular event or future events, because she. Also Karen said in one of her emails, she's looking forward in the future, you know, for us to partner. Um, I look at it as well as sometimes partnerships can be um donations, you know, well, not partnership, but. You know, joining in as if we're gonna give a donation, or if we're gonna sponsor or whatnot. My only concern is that August is right, right around the corner, and um. If we're gonna make a recommendation as well, for us, if we want to pursue something, you know, um having a luncheon. Another event or whatnot, or fundraiser, it doesn't even have to be a fundraiser, something to unify the women again. Um for that day, um a light lunch or whatnot, and of course, we wouldn't take this out, um the whole amount. Because I agree with Kiana wholeheartedly on that, that we shouldn't tap into everything that we have, we wanna keep that cushion. And also, I believe you said it too, Sarah, that we need to keep that cushion, we need a nice amount, you know, not to drain it. So my thoughts was to have sponsors. Um I have a couple of sponsors in mind, if that's the route that we're gonna go, um to sponsor it for us. Um so if we, or if you all make a recommendation, I do have a um a venue in mind. And that the cost of that facility, the banquet, would be, um it would be no cost. But, you know, we would have to, of course, pay for the food or whatnot, you know, the entertainment, if we're having entertainment, but my thought of it too is to have some speakers. Speakers there, and also some um awards to present um to some in the community or whatnot, for their efforts that they have given. So, even with that, again, that was, I was looking at some sponsors, about three different ones I had in mind to ask. You know, if they would um be generous and help us out if we're going to proceed with uh planning our event, or. An event for Equality Day. Or if you all want to wait until Karen, you know, um give us the information. Share the information after their meeting, and if we wanna partner with them. For that day, or if we just wanna give them a donation or whatnot to help out with the speaker, if that's what she's asking. So, you know, it's a lot of things that we can think about here, or unless you all have some recommendations, not just my recommendation, if you all. Have something in mind that you would like to see occur for that day. Any thoughts?
I think um we should make a decision once you get all, you're clear on all the information as to what they're requesting, once you, once you meet with them, then bring it back to to us. And then we're exactly sure of what they're requesting, cause as of right now, we're not sure of, you know, it's a donation, sponsorship, so. Once, I mean, because the next meeting, you know, cause you said June fifth, meet Saturday, is that correct?
No, she has a meeting, she doesn't wanna meet with me until after she has her meeting, June the fifth. I did um welcome her to come and present um at the June twentieth, you know, and maybe at that time she can provide all of the information. I also stated to um Karen that we can also meet after her June fifth, prior to our June twentieth, if she likes, if she wants to. But it's no problem with me adding her on um June twentieth's agenda for our next meeting. And maybe she can bring all of the information, what she's requesting. My question to you all is, should I continue to move forward, trying to get some things in place in case we decide? If we would like to um hold something ourself, should I continue to move in that direction, getting information? Seeking um some funds or whatnot? Or should I just pause, but again, my only concern is August is right around the corner.
If you wait until the twentieth, you're not gonna have time to reserve.
Right, well, I have um a date that I, you know, the twenty, was it, is Saturday the twenty-fourth? That I asked, requested them, right, to hold that place for us, that venue, I didn't wanna announce it yet. Because um I wanted to see what you all were saying, if we wanted to do something, um hold something.
Did you discuss this right now, I mean, while we're here?
Right.
Um, is that, is everybody on board with us having or doing something? Um from us, not necessarily partnering with anyone doing, but our commission, I mean, I. I would say yes to that, um but I don't know how everybody else feel.
Any more discussion?
Okay, the um League of Women Voters, they're gonna do it in August as well, right?
Right, um there, she's planning it in um. August, she didn't say what date, she just said in August, and they're trying to get a speaker to, to discuss the topic, right?
My understanding.
Do they have the speaker?
They have been waiting for us to talk to them about organizing the event. They have not taken any action, they're waiting for us to.
Well, it's not so much that they waiting for us, because I, I um. I'm available, I've tried to meet with all of them, but again, things come up and I understand. And it was an emergency that happened with one of the young ladies, and she wasn't able to meet. Um Linda wasn't able to meet, and Karen stated that she wasn't able to attend tonight's meeting, but however, she stated. After she meets June fifth, that she can come back with some information.
Well, I don't, I don't think that we should take on the entire task of of us doing it, and then the League just come along, you know, we need them to. We need, you know, work together with us, you know what I mean?
But that's what we're saying, is it gonna be too different, are we partnering with them on this particular day with the?
Cause I'm, I'm thinking as of what she said, like they're waiting on us, you know?
But what are they waiting on us for?
Correct.
Right, that's what I'm not understanding.
They're waiting for us since April to just sit down and talk about it.
But I'm, that's what I'm saying, I, I don't have any control over their schedules, I'm willing to meet, and I have made myself available to meet. So how are they waiting on us, that's what I'm not understanding.
It sounds like they wanna know if we wanna partner, and that's what they're waiting on, but we can't agree if we're gonna partner if we don't know what we're partnering with.
Exactly, exactly, that's what, that, exactly.
So it's like they, they're holding off on all their planning because of us?
Well, I'm.
I know, you, you're not working to us, but it sound like they're not doing nothing until we say.
That's not true.
But, well, it's kinda sound like.
Well. So are they asking us to partner with them on this day, is that what they're asking for, Lori?
Yeah, they've asked quite a while ago, and um. I think at one meeting, I have to check the minutes, we actually formed a committee of commissioners to take this on, did we not? Um meanwhile, you've wanted to meet with the leadership, so. Meanwhile, you've wanted to meet with the leadership, so we haven't, we were waiting for you to do that before we can do anything.
Okay, so again, clarity Lori, yes, we did have a subcommittee and we still do. Kiana and Nyla and I believe Charlene was sitting on that as well, along with you. However, it's not my place and I won't put Kiana, Nyla, or Charlene in the midst of something that we have no clue on what's taking place. We don't know what they're requesting from us, we don't know what they wanna plan. All I know is...
It was a mutual discussion, is what it was gonna be.
Can I, may I finish? Okay, so again, it would be, to me, it would be unfair for Nyla and Kiana or Charlene to agree to something and myself to something that we have no idea of what's taking place. What are they, we don't even know what they're asking. I get it that you're saying partnership, but what are we partnering with? All I know is the topic is Caitlin, a speaker.
It was a proposal.
Okay, but I'm just saying, all I know, that's, I'm just sharing with you, the only information I know is Caitlin, that they were trying to get a speaker for Cait, Caitlin was her name, and they hadn't secured that yet. And I guess she was gonna discuss reproductive rights.
They wanted to know if we were also wanting to do that.
To do what, huh? I'm sorry.
They're not gonna, that was the idea from the beginning, that was just a proposal.
As a proposed topic?
As a proposed topic, yeah. Thanks, Keisha. That wasn't set in stone, they have not...
So it could be something else, but it depends on whether or not partnering, so they kinda waiting to see what maybe we wanna do, partnering with them.
Okay.
Exactly. I think you should talk to them right after that fifth meeting, before our 20th meeting. And then you at least have some information and not wait until they come here and then speak to us. We need to kinda know probably before then. So if you could possibly get a meeting before, or even if someone could send an email, bullet points, just this is what we're thinking. In case somebody can't make it, we could take that and say, we could talk about it, even just us. It'd be nice to just be able to just jot down ideas and we could say, okay, we wanna do that, we would like to join with that, or we wouldn't like, you know, either way. Or maybe another topic or...
Right.
Because we all set on, you know, work for different people and organizations, so we need to all be, you know...
See, and that's, that was another thing too. And that was one of the reasons I said I didn't want to agree with something that you all were uncomfortable. Again, we're all a commission and you all have the right to voice how you feel or if you wanna participate or not. So I didn't, that's the, what Nyla just stated, that's why I wanted to bring it back to you all. I would feel comfortable since Kiana and Nyla, Charlene's on the committee as well. I can ask Linda after her, oh, not Linda, I'm sorry, Karen, right? She's the one that's coordinating the event, I believe?
Well, are you including me in that?
Yeah, of course you're in it. They had, no, 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 of course you're in it.
Sure. Karen Bernanke.
Okay, so if she can schedule a meeting, if you three can attend that meeting as well. So will you be able to attend that meeting as well? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll be there too.
Alright.
Okay, so I'll schedule a meeting with her, we'll have that meeting and we'll bring it back here.
From, I mean, from what you say Jackie, you have reached out to them multiple times.
I have, three different people.
Okay, so the fourth time, I would suggest that if there's no communication or no type of meeting, we need to move forward with our event in, because you have, you have reached out multiple times.
So in saying that, is it, are you all comfortable if I continue to do some research and getting things in place, maybe develop the sponsorship letters or whatnot? But just don't move, just do the background research or whatnot until we get this information? Are you all okay with that? Is anybody opposed to that?
Just, just so I'm clear, so could you restate that for the minutes? I'm confused.
What I just stated?
Yeah, so there's two different things going on, is that, yes, it is?
Okay, so I'll reach out to Karen and I will request us to schedule a meeting after her June 5th meeting with the League of Women Voters. Prior to our June 20th meeting, Lori, Nyla, Kiana, Charlene, and myself will meet with them. Okay, to see what it is that they're requesting, you know, how they wanna partner or whatnot, or what they're requesting or what the partnership is looking like, the topic or whatever the case may be. Then at that point, we'll bring it back on June 20th. We'll make recommendations or motion. In the meantime, Lori, I will continue to do research, meaning creating and developing sponsorship letters.
So you're gonna create another event in case...
Well, we're gonna continue to pursue that in that direction, but in the meantime, I'ma still be working towards it. You know, trying to generate the letters, the sponsorship letters, the venue, getting bids regarding the type of food.
And you're gonna actually do, put those out there? I mean, you're gonna, you're going to request the sponsorships, date, book the venue?
Yes, but with the recommendation of everyone else, of course. I want the commission to decide on it, but I'm doing research. So, yeah, that's, meaning she has, you have... Right, I'll have everything at the next meeting.
We can't move on anything, she's just doing the background stuff.
Okay, thank you. I'm just doing the background, the research, getting the different venues, the pricing, the bids for food or whatnot. Okay, right, because again, August is right around the corner, so we have to do something.
Maybe not this one, even possibly just maybe in the future when we have a little more time.
Yeah.
Right.
To put it together.
Yes.
It's another option.
Okay, so any concerns, any questions, any other recommendations or whatnot?
I just think in the future, when someone asks any of us to, for any type of request or anything, I think it's important for them to come and meet, you know, and like explain themselves instead of us trying to figure out through email or try to guess so that they can be clear and we can have a dialogue, we can ask, ask questions and things. I think that's very important for us to emphasize to that individual or that organization.
I agree.
And I just wanna make a point on behalf of the Women Voters. They've gone through a shift and we have, so there's new cast of characters. Officers change, members change, so that's what we've been dealing with.
And that's, and thank you for stating that Lori, and that, that happens. And since you stated that Lori about change, that, that happens and change is important. And that's another thing that, I'm not gonna say a concern, but maybe something that we continue to look at. Yes, it was previous and I respect all of the commissioners, they did, they laid the foundation, great group of women of the commission, but then you still have another current one now that we may have to revise some things or some things may change, we may have to implement some things. And again, everyone may not think or agree on what was presented from, you know, the last year or whatever vote, so that's all I was saying too, you know, because change occurs.
Sure does.
Any other questions? No? Okay.
I have a quick question, you said how many were doing the, of us, the subcommittee to meet?
For the Equality Day?
You said you were gonna, you'd meet with...
Oh, it was gonna be, well, the subcommittee is Kiana, Nyla, and Shar. And you have stated that you wasn't, if I'm not mistaken, correct me. I believe you have stated that you will work on the media part of it, the publication, things of that nature, but you wasn't certain if you could make all the meetings.
Yeah, it's just because I thought you named like five people.
Well, it would be, well, Lori, Lori is the representative with them.
But I'm on the subcommittee.
Right.
So there are four of us plus Jackie, that's five.
And that's okay?
Well, it's not, it's not the legislation.
It has to be less than a quorum.
Less than a quorum.
That is our rule, yeah.
Okay.
So a subcommittee cannot meet that's more than a quorum? If it's a quorum, then it's a meeting.
Okay, so in saying that, I'm saying meeting with them. We're, we're not voting, we're not voting or anything like that, we're meeting with them.
Okay, I just know a subcommittee had to be less than a quorum.
Right, no, when it comes, well, yes, it does for the subcommittee. So when you all are deciding or making decisions or planning or whatnot for the subcommittee, but this is a meeting that we're having with them, right? So that's a little bit different. Can you place some emphasis or anything on that Daisy, or do you know regarding the quorum?
I don't, but that's... Yeah.
Subcommittee, okay, so that, no, 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 you're right, you're right. Because I think I did see that when it comes to a quorum for the subcommittee. So I appreciate you stating that, but again, because I wanna place clarity, it's a meeting with them, okay?
That's the part of it.
But when it, yeah, but when we come back with everything, then it's different when the subcommittee begins to work on it. If that's what we're gonna choose to do, okay? Because we're gonna bring it back to all the commissioners, okay? And then we'll make a recommendation then on the 20th, and I believe she stated, or I did, I shared with her that she's more than welcome to come to the meeting on the 20th. I will add her to the agenda, okay? So Kiana, Nyla, and Lori, I will add you both on the email to Karen requesting a date. Is there any date that's not good for you or, how about you Nyla? Evenings?
This evening too.
It's good or not?
Yes, after 5:00.
After 5:00? Nyla?
It just depends on my day, because other boards meet in the evening, so.
Okay.
But...
It's Wednesdays or Thursdays, you know?
Depending on if it's first Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay.
So just let me know, I'll try to...
Okay, because I know the first, that, that 5th is that first week and I know she said after the 5th.
That should be alright.
Okay. Any special day for you Lori?
I'm pretty open.
Okay, alright, and I will be including you all on that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any possible way that they could have zoomed in? Is there possible, like if they can't actually be here personally, there's a way we can zoom them in, we can speak with them over, as we talking to them over, over the line, you know, like a zoom?
Are you sharing for, are you saying for the June 20th meeting or prior?
She wasn't able to attend, but...
Today?
Right, because she may not be physically not able to attend, but she could have zoomed for a few minutes to have that, you know, speaking to us about it.
That's a good idea, but I think she said that she had another engagement.
For anyone, said they cannot actually make it here, is it possible we can zoom in on a meeting?
I think for Zooms, we have to get a certain location.
I need to talk to Andy about that.
That's what I'm just gonna say, can we?
Because if you're at City Hall.
When we had, when COVID was around and we had the Zooms, if we were doing, if someone is absent and had to come participate through Zoom, we had to go to City Hall in one of a specific room to access that technology for the mission.
So if we had that today, then we would, would have took care of everything today. Instead of coming back using our quality time, we could have went to a certain location, talked with the person online, because we're being more than nice. So I do appreciate you going in three or four times, so.
I think they have to, it has to be notified within a certain timeframe too.
Yeah, that is. So appreciate that too as well, because I know how hard it is when you're trying to get someone, you know, get everybody together, but we have lives as well, so thank you Nyla. Thank you Kiana for making that statement.
Well, you know what, since you said that Angie, thank you for that. I'll just go ahead and schedule a date after the 5th and see if she's okay with that date, okay? And if you all wanna email me or send me a text or whatnot of what date is good after the 5th, then I'll share that date with her to see if Karen, Zabel, Karen, Lori, well Lori's subcommittee too, but I think she was adding someone else, is it Regina?
Regina's gonna be the precedent.
Okay.
As of Saturday.
Okay, Regina.
Brudel.
Brudel. Okay. Okay, any questions, comments? Any city council liaison comments, anything you wanna add or any?
I don't have any updates from the city council, that's it right now.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Put any questions on the answer.
Okay.
Yes.
I was jotting it down.
After Tuesday, I'll have a lot more interesting things after we...
Okay, you don't wanna know?
On the 20th, next month.
Okay.
Oh, no, it's Tuesday, yeah, yeah, Tuesday.
Oh, I'll next week, yeah.
Okay, I heard a little bit, but I wasn't for sure what y'all were saying, so. Commissioners? Any comments, any updates, any events taking place, any announcements? I know you're having something.
I heard so many things.
I know y'all wanna get out of here.
I know, can you elaborate on that, the family fun or the family fitness?
I have a few things, okay, I'll try to do this real quick. Walk with a Doc starts May 29th. It starts, it's called Walk with a Doc.
Walk with the Doc.
Yes, May 29th, it runs for six weeks, 5:30 PM at City Hall. You walk through Washington Park, it's a 5K. You have doctors come and speak, you work out, and then you take a walk and there's free incentives every week and this is free. So we partnered with the city to do it, this is our second year partnering with the city, but we've been doing this for over 10 years. So that starts May 29th. Fit Together, this program I think I shared with y'all last time, that starts June 4th, Tuesday, Thursday, 3:30 to 5:00 PM, ages 8 to 15. This is a free fitness, physical activity program. Pastor Rod Gaston, who's a trainer, he will be doing all the workouts with the kids. Nikia Bonds, who we've used as a caterer, she will be cooking with the kids, healthy food eating, so they get to learn how to cook. And then each week, the kids go home with that exact meal for their entire family every week. So they get a meal kit every week, food.
Now, would this be together at the same location or...
Same location, which is Pastor Gaston's Temple Total Fitness, which is off of US 20? Yeah, so that starts June 4th. I'm on the back to school rally committee, citywide back to school rally with Michigan City Air Schools. We have our date set for that, August 10th. That will be at Elston Gilfield, the time is 11 to 3:00 PM. So we're looking for, you know, vendors to set up booth table. We're not charging anyone this year. You know, how we do with it, it's entertainment, they bring the kids, it's for K through 12. So the entire Michigan City Air School system, it's gonna be a busy day. And last, Michigan City Indiana Black Expo is having their corporate luncheon at Blue Chip, June 14th. We're celebrating African-American leaders. The Lifetime Achievement Award is going to the Juvenile Magistrate Erica Stallworth and I-Rise Award is going to Aubrey Clifton, and the other one is the surprise. So tickets are $50. Reach out to myself, I have tickets, and any other board member have those tickets. Again, that's June 14th from 11:00, I think the doors open at 11:00 and I think it's till 2:00 o'clock. That's it, thank you.
If you have any of the flyers, Disher, you can send me, I can...
Yes, I'll email all of these flyers, it's a lot. Yes, yes, and we have the one for the back to school rally too.
I'm still trying to get...
And we just did it.
I know, I mean, it's a great event with the backpacks and...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
Backpacks, yes.
That's a great thing.
Yeah, packs, yeah.
Thank you, Nyla.
Thanks.
Any, Angie, did you wanna make any?
I was just gonna say that I'll be able to attend with you to set up the...
For Juneteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Angela, I didn't hear you. Help Jackie to set the table for Juneteenth.
Okay. Keisha, anything for minorities, coalition, anything?
No, not right now. No, not right now.
Okay, Kiana? Nothing, okay, sure, anything regarding school?
Yeah, there's a lot of camp signups right now, so there's on the Michigan City School page, there's a section for summer information, Boys and Girls Club, Safe Harbor, those types of things, there's some different sports camps information that's been going out for the summers. The Michigan City Police Department does- Youth Leadership Academy? Yes, Youth Leadership Academy, that registration, I believe, has now opened. And I wanna say that one is on the Michigan City Schools page, but I'm not sure where else you could find it, but so if there's anything, any parents that are looking for children activities, it's a lot going on. Lots for middle schoolers.
Now, is it a cost or fees when it comes to the summer camp?
Very, depends on which one, there was, I don't know, yeah, it just depends on which one.
Is it something out there, or is anyone aware of, like, if a a parent doesn't, isn't able to afford for their child to go to a camp or something like that? Is it some funding, or, or is anyone aware of this? I'm sorry.
We've tried different organizations, but there's a lot, like, one summer, they had camp, and I'm not sure if they're doing that again this summer, but they were, the ones my middle schooler attended were all cost-free. Save, Boys and Girls Club, summer camp is not a charge. The Youth Academy, I don't think there was a charge for that one. I don't know if, I mean, they said two charges, but I don't, I think that most of them are run through rates.
And I know, I know it was a concern at one time too, that they're booked, a lot of camps are booked. And so, yeah, and they book fast, so any recommendations? If a parent is looking to get their child into a camp, but they're all filled, I know you have yours for free as well, but-
Right, they need to email or call right away, don't wait till the last minute, because they do fill up pretty quick. As soon as those flyers get out, and it's posted, they're filled up fast, because they want their kids to be involved in something, especially if they're not in some type of sport, so.
There's a formation army camp too.
Oh, is it? Is there, is there a free?
I think it's incumbent to qualify, and I don't believe there's a charge for that.
Okay, thank you. Christina, this will be last, looking at the time. Christina sent this flyer out, is Christina the last president for the commissioners? Dance It Out, and that begins Wednesday, June 5th. It's gonna be hosted June 5th, June 12th, June 19th, and June 26th, from 6 o'clock to 7:30. It's at 110 West 9th Street on the second floor, $10 suggested donation, and it's a dance party workout. So come as you need, and find your inner groove, it looks like it's gonna be a lot of fun, so. She's hosting that, and then also Christine, Christina, I'm sorry, is hosting a teen dance workshop. And that's gonna be Monday, June 3rd, June 10th, 10th, June 17th, and Wednesday, June 5th as well. And that workshop is free, the space is limited to 15 slots, ages 12 and up. Registration, I don't know, it says registration is required, $25 non-refundable fee, so. And then she's also doing the stilt dance workshop. And that's June 4th, June 11th, June 18th, and Thursday, June 6th, June 13th, from 10 to 11:30. And that's also at 110 West 9th Street in Michigan City on the second floor, and the workshop is free. Registration is required though, $25 non-refundable registration fee. And then I believe they have to have knee pads, tennis shoes, and a roll of duct tape. Other than that, that's all I have.
On Saturday, June 15th, right before the Juneteenth event, there is Michigan City Pride Fest over at the Guy Fomin Amphitheater. It's from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM, it's free admission, but you have to pay to park if you don't have a stair.
One to five, was it?
One to eight.
One to eight.
And there's music, and vendors and community booths, and-
That's what I was gonna say.
Food trucks, games, prizes, all sorts of stuff.
Okay, so there's community resources there as well, tables, okay?
We have over 55 booths signed up already.
Wow, that's great.
And who do you sign up with?
Because I didn't see anything.
Oh, it's at the Michigan City Pride Fest page, there's an event, but I will send that to you too, yeah.
So you're gonna email it out?
I can, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I'll email.
Yeah, okay, alright, any other questions, comments? Well, I appreciate everyone taking time out of your busy schedule to come to the meeting, sorry that we went over. I'll try to keep the time, keep, be more mindful of our time, but thanks again, appreciate each and every one of y'all, and you all have a great evening. Oh, we have to motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm motion to adjourn.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, thank you all.
Appreciate you.